Favorite tree still standing.
I went back to look at it today, yeah.
It looked too healthy, but it's still hanging there.
Which tree?
Oh, that, uh, saltmill road.
Oh.
One of them. Like that, in the pine trees or cedar trees. I had Bob look at it, he's cut timber for a living, he went out and looked at it. Said he said it's still not all bad. Someday it's gonna have to come down, it's on the town right away. Right up through the whole life piece. It's a big sucker. Yeah, we gotta cut another one up right down.
Yeah, it rotten, so I cut that up too, that whole side of the road there, I wasn't cutting up there.
Cleaned up all the side, right, raked all that stuff, threw it up in the ditch. But came down with the way too, just cut it up, pushed it off the road. It's all cleaned up.
There's somebody in trees rotten now, tree there, it's waiting for a good ice storm or something like that.
Yeah, I was out the other week. Walked outside, I moved here when we were going, left these went down, but it went down straight down. All them trees over there are rotten anymore. Not any up there, but. I think town park looks pretty good back where them trees are going with Troy Fest, I think it looks better now than before.
Looks sharp.
And there's a.
Yeah.
Hey Brian, I heard Joanne Shepherd will sign for unemployment now. You do actually get the tree down, no leaves or yard now, so she's.
She's still got the front of the house. There's still gutters to be done.
She'll still be out there.
She's still got a cigarette bunch of that.
The gutter's gotta be done.
She always get about ten bags in there.
Gotta get them all out.
I usually have seven bags of leaves and this year I only had. Because we just take gutter in, and now when it rains, they all wash down.
Does that gutter pretty well take care of the water now?
Oh, yeah. It looks really well.
Oh, you walked over? You know, well, probably your hand.
It's seven o'clock. Get started. Glad you'll need to. The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God invisible. First thing on the agenda is choosing the new town marshal. Oh, minutes, yes, we have to improve the minutes first. Um, has everybody had the opportunity to read minutes?
I did.
Got a motion to approve them? Seconding, all in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll move. Oh, and then the minutes for the executive session on November twenty fourth. Did you have an opportunity to read those?
Yes.
Okay, I read them as well.
Our second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we'll move to new business. Little John?
Oh, folks.
First item is choosing a new town marshal. Um, we had three applicants.
Yeah.
Total. And we, um, we had one that stood out above all the others. And his name is Adam Fosker. Um, and I believe I've said his last name right?
Is it Boskin?
Boskin, okay. Um, and we, um, we need to agree if he should be our new town marshal. Can I get a motion?
I would make a motion after, after the interview and seeing the candidates that we had. By far our best candidate as, as on discussion went the other day. I'm, I make a motion.
I'll second. And then also, um, will we vote on that? Um, he was the Sunman Deputy, uh, Marshal. And then he went to, uh, West Harrison in Indian Lakes. And that's where he's working now at both of those locations and he's gonna give up, um, one or both of those jobs to come here. Um, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
So Adam will be our new town marshal. And then when, once we get Adam four in, we need to discuss, um, the Deputy Marshal. And we'll get him, uh, get his input on the Deputy Marshal.
So by November it's gonna be part time?
Pardon me?
By November it's just gonna be part time?
Yes, as they are today. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a resolution to transfer funds.
Um, so I have that, we, because we're paying more now for the increased internet speed, we basically ran out of. What was budgeted in the telephone fund, so we can move money into the other fund to cover that, that last bill.
It's not really changing. In, in the eyes of the state board accounts, it's not really even changing funds because it's taking out one line item within the general fund to another line item within the judge.
Okay.
And it doesn't give you the ability to spend more, it just means you're, you're changing the way you're spending the budget.
And this is to cover the, the increase of the internet?
Yeah.
So we can live stream?
Right.
Okay.
So that was not something we knew we needed to budget for last year.
Right. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is the amended salary ordinance.
So, I don't know how you wanna discuss that, but I, I think you probably have to read each, read each one. The only thing that's not changing is the utility clerk, it's already increased.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and read it. Um, being ordained by the Town Council of Oldenburg, Franklin County, Indiana, the following be enacted as amended salary ordinance for the town of Oldenburg. Section one, that the salary of the Town Council members, four thousand, two thousand, two, four thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars per person each year. Section two, that the salary of the clerk treasurer, um, be fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars for the year. General fund fifteen thousand, two ninety-five, southwest county fire tor- territory is five hundred dollars to make up that salary. Section three, that the salary of the town marshal of be twenty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars per year. General fund and the deputy ten thousand dollars per year in general fund. Total police thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Section four, that the salary of the utility clerk is thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars per year. Section five, that the hourly wage of miscellaneous work for the town be seven dollars and twenty-five cents per hour. Section six, that the salary of the town hall cleaner be six hundred dollars per year. Section seven, the utility board member shall receive twenty-five dollars per meeting attended. Section eight, the hourly wage for training a utility clerk shall be twenty-five dollars per hour. Section nine, the hourly wage for extra work done by the utility board member shall be twenty-five dollars per hour. And section ten, that the hourly wage for training of the clerk treasurer shall be twenty-five dollars per hour. These changes shall be in full force and effective January first, twenty twenty-six. And this was already voted on?
Yes. No.
Okay. Okay, okay, alright. So. Do I have a motion to accept? Is there any discussion on the amended ordinances? Yeah.
If I'm against the training, become a full force deputy, would that be, would there be a third paid position there or a two paid position?
As of now, we have two paid positions. So that would be something we'd have to discuss.
By like, why I'm breaking it up?
Yeah, we'd have to discuss that at the time when that occurs. Okay. Um. Do I have a motion to accept the ordinance?
Make motion to accept.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, the next thing on the agenda is the Duke receptacle debacle.
I'd be happy to just kind of speak on that. Um, so what happened was when the Christmas decorations were hung, um, the guys volunteering noticed that we had all new receptacles on our poles, which is great, probably needed to be upgraded. However, eleven, eleven or so poles did not have new receptacles. Um, so in co- in contacting Duke, we have just signed a new contract for them this year. And we should be paying for thirty-five dollars, or thirty-five receptacles total. Um, so between Duke, our community contact got fired. And so they don't know who, who really is like in charge of us now, so I've talked to a bunch of different people at Duke. And then also talking to Jeff called, um, he said that basically we have forty decorations and thirty-one of them are plugged in right now. So I, I think, he, he said if we're going to alter the contract, that we should just ask for five more, that we should ask for forty total. Um, Duke agreed, the guy that I talked to today, he agreed that whatever you're paying for already, we certainly make sure that we have thirty-five receptacles for you, but if you want more, let us know, we'll put more in. So we're, we're paying, the new price that we're paying is five dollars and seventy-four cents each. So we're paying two hundred dollars and ninety cents a month.
For those receptacles?
For the thirty-five receptacles. Jeff says we have thirty-one right now, so they at least need to come give us four more, but.
So did you say a month, that's what we're paying?
Yeah, it's a lot.
And they're not even used, but once a year?
They, they prorate it over the twelve months, so we're not getting such a huge bill, but it's still a lot.
We did those numbers, I thought.
Freudenfest covers the main pole cost, so that's different, but. Yeah, it's, it's pricey.
So they recommended just five more, not, not the full eleven?
Jeff says he would go, yeah, that he would go for a full forty because we have forty decorations, so why not? But you guys can decide, keep it as is, what we're paying for, and they'll come and make sure we have the full thirty-five that we've been paying for, or do we want?
So it's an increase of five?
Yeah.
So it'd be another thirty dollars, just under thirty dollars?
Yeah.
A month.
But he, that's what Jeff said, he said my recommendation would be to make a total of forty, so.
Okay, do we know where they are?
Jeff does.
He didn't tell you where they are?
He has a map, um, the, the Duke people I've talked to said that we know it's mapped out somewhere, but they're, again, like, they're not sure who has our account information, so.
We think they're just, we think they're the ones missing on Washington Street?
He didn't say that.
There are no lights on Washington Street now.
Okay.
Uh, Christmas lights. Are there usually on Washington Street between the post office and water?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are they hung down there?
They're, they're hung, right, they're just not lit.
They're just not lit, okay.
I believe on both sides of the street as well, we've moved them soon.
So basically what we have to decide is, is it worth three hundred and sixty dollars a year to light those?
Additional.
Additional five?
Yeah.
Any thoughts?
Where are we currently paying again?
Right now, we're paying, we're paying for thirty-five to the tune of two hundred dollars and ninety cents a month.
You, you pay that forever?
Yeah, well, for the three years anyways.
Wow.
The thing with Duke is they hadn't raised our rates since like two thousand and two or something, so. So it was a, it was a big increase.
Yeah, we.
So that's like well over eight dollars a month per pole. Current, currently.
Right. Well, it's five, it's five dollars and seventy-four cents per receptacle.
Oh, right, five divided two ninety by thirty-five, we got eight point two eight.
It's two hundred and ninety cents.
Right.
Not two ninety.
It's two hundred dollars and ninety cents.
Right.
Is what the additional amount would be for.
No, that's.
Oh, that's what it is now?
That's our current.
Yeah.
Five, five seventy-four times thirty-five.
With five seventy-four additional units, we're looking at additional twenty-eight seventy on top of that. That should, if I can do middle mash, be twenty-two ninety, so.
How many of them are listed for in best years?
Sixty. Um, those are all up high, I don't think Freudenfest uses any of those.
They are for the decoration.
Right, they're just for the Christmas decorations.
So the new yearly, maybe two thousand, seven fifty-five, twenty, with a monthly bill of two twenty-nine sixty as opposed to the current two hundred and ninety cents, which yearly that comes to twenty-four, ten, eighty.
So it's three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Three hundred and forty dollars more, approximately three hundred and forty-five.
Three forty-five, three, three forty-four with the, with the change.
For the year.
For the year, that's, yeah, we're talking yearly numbers there. Um, it's the biggest question, have we, have we looked, it's not a huge number, but have we looked to make sure we can assume that, that little bit extra? I would assume so.
Um. Good question. Let's see what we budgeted for.
Cause I want them lit, but this might be a, a next year Christmas, unfortunately.
They're probably not gonna get it.
Right now.
They're not gonna get the receptacles up this year.
Oh, anyway.
Anyway, are they?
Oh, yeah, I don't know, I'm probably not.
Before this Christmas.
Corporation to come out here, that's probably not, um. I, I can't answer that for certain because I just have this twenty twenty-six budget, I don't know how much it increased without looking at twenty-five.
So why don't we just put this off until next year, add the five and then, um, have it budgeted?
Yeah.
And then that way we've got it all covered.
Yeah.
So we'll just table that for now.
So I will follow up with them though and make sure that we have thirty-five working receptacles that we are paying for.
Okay, the next one is, uh, Safe Passage Fundraiser. Um. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
I can, um, so we got an, an email through the website asking if we would donate to the Safe Passage Fundraiser, which is Saturday, I think, like.
She was asking for an answer by the twenty-nine, I mean, some, probably, yeah, November.
Yeah, she wanted an answer by Monday, the twenty-ninth, but she sent the email.
On the twenty-four?
But, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I didn't, I didn't reach out to her, um, was out of town for wedding and then came back, was sick. So anyways, um, I think the discussion was just, does, does anyone wanna spearhead?
What, what she's asking for is a basket from Oldenburg with, um, um.
Items to be auctioned off.
Items to be auctioned off and the gift basket filled with items that represent the town, the beauty, the history and the events associated with Oldenburg. You know, if you wanted to get a basket and have something from Freudenfest in there and then, and some other things from some of the businesses in town. Uh, that's what she was asking for, is a gift, a gift basket. Um, but she would want that by December sixth, which is Saturday. Do you, do you think that's doable?
Um, yeah, I think it might be, I'll be glad to connect with committee tomorrow and, and we can decide what we wanna do if we, if we're able to do something that quick.
Okay.
I'll, I'll forward this to you Gary, so you can have her contact information. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, and I can go down to, um, Beautiful World and some of the other places to see if they might wanna donate anything to put in the basket. Alright, um, the next thing on the agenda is, uh, licensing retainage fees for the, it's not the retainage fees, but it's the retainage for the, um, walking trail. So we paid the trail, there was a retainage, so that when things are completed, then he would get paid the rest of the money just to guarantee that all the punchless things are taken care of. Um. We need to decide if we, basically everything is done on the walking trail. The, that licensing's going to do, or that has been asked to do to this point.
There's a couple of small things, like they're gonna roll the grass next spring, they sell some signs to hang, what, what about the bulk?
Right, and there's gotta be some boulsters installed.
Yeah.
Uh, all those things, just a few things, so, um, and then the court. The, the, uh, pickleball courts are complete as far as licensing's concerned. So it has been brought up that maybe, um, we can pay the retainage for the, uh, pickleball courts now. Uh, so it is complete and there will not be any additional work from him. And he's worked really well with us on this project, he came in, um, on time.
Jeff, Jeff suggested that maybe we pay like, we hold back like four or five thousand until it's completely done, but then to maybe pay the rest.
Well, um. He wanted me, he suggested that we pay the retainage fee for the court and then pay half of the retainage fee for the rest of the trail.
Okay.
And that, that, the rest of the fee was how much? It was seventeen thousand.
Yeah, I know that, I know what the total was. Was it, was it three thousand, one ninety-one fifty?
No, that for the complete project, it was more than that.
Uh, sorry, that was, that was just for the court.
Okay, who's this from? Okay. The retainage for the complete, for the trail part of the project was seventeen thousand, three sixty, ninety. And it was, um. Discussed that we should pay half of that and then keep the rest, uh, until it's completed. And then the retainage for the, um, courts, go ahead and be paid in full.
And that was the, the three thousand, right?
Yes. Um. Can't get what that number exactly is. Uh, the retainage for that was, um, three thousand, one ninety-one fifty. So we need to vote on, um, to pay half of the retainage for the walking trail portion of it?
Eight, eight sixty, eighty, forty-five.
Yeah, you did the math.
Yeah.
Yep, that's it, eight, eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and forty-five cents. And then the retainage for the, uh, courts was three thousand, one ninety-one fifty. For a total of eleven thousand, eight seventy-one, ninety-five. And that still leaves enough money to form retainage to get it completed.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with that, um, I, I think Tom has done solid work down there. Um, so if this, if this can incentivize and also incentivize to make sure the job gets done on the back end too by, by keeping that little back half. I, I like the idea.
I think that's helpful, back.
Okay, so get a motion?
I'd make formal motion.
And.
Aye.
All, all in favor, yeah.
Aye.
Alright. And then the last thing on the agenda is donations received.
We, I got a phone call from a very sweet lady named Carolyn Morgan. And she wanted to make a donation and I just thought I would read her little thank you notes, cause it's lovely. Um, to the town of Oldenburg, Eric and Bill, thank you for all of your years of service to our community. Kate, thank you for your service, that should really come to me. God bless you, Carolyn Morgan, happy holidays. She sent seventy-five dollars and for our fire department, she said they showed up, um, at her house, her property, before she even knew it was burning. Um, and so she said, I can't thank you enough for your service, you put out a fire on my farm in the Floyd Bay field. Each time the crops had become, had been harvested, my neighbors started the fires by burning trash, it was an accident. You had the fires out before I even knew I had a fire, my neighbors told me, thank you so much, happy holidays, and she sent them a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I thought that was lovely and worth sharing.
Yes, awesome. Thank you. We need to discuss, uh, everything we discussed at the, uh, November twenty-fourth executive session about the plaques and, and the funding for all that.
Okay, yes. Um, so our police officers are retiring and so we have agreed that we are, are giving them, sorry, I'm ruining the surprise. We are having some plaques made, um, and also some retirement badges are, are coming. Um, and we are paying that out of, do you remember? It's, uh, our police equipment fund since they are retirement gifts and I, I think it just needs to be brought up at a meeting, so. it just needs to be brought up at a meeting, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, consider that done.
These guys actually need to vote.
Okay, okay.
All right, and what is the, do you have the amount still?
Um, each retirement plaque was seventy-five and I, I don't have the amount.
No. Badges were one sixty-seven each before taxes and shipping, right?
Yeah, so add in another maybe ten each for taxes and shipping.
So one seventy-seven, that's it.
Yeah.
We did, we, we called it approximately five fifty at the meeting is what, what kind we were expecting there with, uh, is that right?
Yeah. Yep.
Well, I still like the idea, guys. I'll, I'll make a motion to, to move forward with that.
I'll approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
See, now you two guys are gonna have to cover at least one more meeting.
Right. I will be there.
Okay. I guess it's good to also state at this time that our wrap-up meeting will be December sixteen. Sixteen. Uh, forget what time.
It's after the utility board meeting.
So how long it takes.
Yeah. Okay, um, now we can move to old business. So, I asked you this question earlier, uh, the court payment has been made.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that was.
To license.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'll go over it after you confirm.
Okay, uh, any more information on the alley vacation between?
I've gone through it once. I haven't seen anything on the initial run-through, uh, but I've only been able to do it through it once. Um, so I'd still like to kind of try to drill in, but nothing, nothing on the initial go-to.
Okay. Um. The Shane property. Have you moved, have you moved forward on that anymore?
Yeah, there's, I need to go across the alleyway.
So we're gonna enter local agreement now?
No. I need to go across the alleyway and do that. That's on, it was on my schedule for today, but I was in Madison all day. I'll take care of it tomorrow morning.
All right, is there any place where else we can look for this alley information, if it go down to Franklin County?
Well, I checked in Franklin County, and there's nothing down there.
Okay.
Or up there.
Okay.
Over there.
Over there.
It's open. That there might be something in the family paperwork.
Okay.
Would shed light on it.
Okay, so is that something we're just gonna?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna run back through it in between now and, and our next one.
Okay.
Hopefully something more will come out there.
We, we should be able to go through meeting minutes too.
If we had meeting minutes, we could search. Other than that, I don't have anything else on the agenda. Uh, do we have anything anybody else wants to discuss?
I'm requesting a building permit. I've been here a couple times and asked for a request on our behalf. Where you're asked to, uh, have the yard checked for any lines, so on and so forth. There is a gas line, which we've got marked, got a flag. And, um, I think Mr. Kellerman asked to check the, uh, boundary limits. It's five feet from the neighbor, so we're good there.
Good.
Pretty simple structure, I'm not sure what else I can offer for that. It's gonna be twenty-two feet off the alleyway, which is more than acceptable for Franklin County.
Okay, and have you been to Franklin County yet? Well, you have to, you have to get this approved first, though.
Pardon me?
You have to get this approved first before you go.
Well, I have to get this before I can get a permit from them, yes.
There's no, there's no, um, utilities underneath the building?
There's a gas line that would be moved.
Okay.
If you call Duke, they'll move it. It'll cost me a thousand bucks, but.
Okay.
So we've done. No other utilities are anywhere. Like I say, it's all clearly marked right now.
And is this, this is on Main Street?
Mark's the next door neighbor.
We're gonna remove a pretty ugly iso or shed and make the town look a little prettier by putting this building there.
Your next door neighbor? Okay. All right. It's gonna be corrugated metal roof, corrugated. Again, you, you've checked and it's gonna be within all the required requirements for setback.
Correct, yes.
All right.
Can I keep that?
Yes, you may.
Can I also have your phone number?
Eight one two five eight four four nine five five.
Should they approve it, I will draw it up and, um, get that stamped.
The only thing that's different on that, it will be twenty-seven feet long instead of twenty-four. Everything else is exactly the same.
Um, and then when it's signed, then I need two dollars from you.
When we measure the yard, it's forty feet across, so we gotta go.
Okay. I don't see anything wrong with that.
Setbacks, setbacks look all right. We've been expecting it, Mark, so. It's all right, it's all right on mine. We've known it's coming.
All right, get a motion to approve the building?
I'd make a motion.
A second.
I agree with this.
I owe you two bucks.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
If you don't give back to me, it's okay. Donate to that ladies.
All right. Thank you.
Two bucks, that's, that's great. Hope Frank McCallie's on two bucks.
No, it's more than two bucks.
How much?
It is more.
Oh, I'm sure it's more, two bucks, yes.
Anything else?
I was gonna, um, just kind of just reiterate, reiterate with N-Dot. Um, N-Dot is saying our police officers have to step up and save people for speeding coming through here. Get people to slow down is what it boils down to, so. Whoever takes over, they're just gonna have to do more proactive. And then like I know one around the corner, I mean, every single week we have a truck that gets stuck there, either hidden, whatever, and now they're packing their horns to get people to stop. So. They also said that's on the police department too.
What is that?
It's monitor the area, I guess, um. I mean, some people will stop and slow down, I want to slow my speed through, some people won't.
Okay.
Just FYI. And then the other thing is, is there any update on our order?
I have not heard anything. Um, is there any updates?
They, it's delayed a little bit because of the government shutdown, but, uh, they should be, should be finalizing things, uh, in a couple of months.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more thing. Um, Denny sent me a text and asked if I would read it. Try not to tear up. He said, I wanted to thank the town council for the unexpected commemorative plaque and gift certificate presented to me at last month's meeting. I was at a loss for words, but since I've had a month to think, I just wanted to say thanks to the folks in Oldenburg for allowing me the privilege of being on the council for so many years. I hope I've left with as many friends as I started to. I will miss the interaction with many of you, but I'm leaving knowing Brian, Dave, Tyler, Kate and John will make Oldenburg an even better place going forward. Thank you all and I'll see you around the village. Denny.
Anything else?
Yes, we got a big tree hanging over us. It's on Mill Road. I, Bob can explain more about that, man, he went out and looked at it.
Uh, it's a, it's a hazard tree, just for the sheer fact that we're getting in in winter time, ice storm going on yard. The tree will not last much longer with the condition it's in. One side of it is reportedly, I would determine, uh, determined blowed out, it's rotten. If you stand in the right spot, you can see before we grew what should be main bowl of the tree. Um, I looked at it just to see if I could take it down. It's doable, but it has a possibility for my method of damaging the county, or town road. I suggested getting Colin Enzinger out, since he has a bucket truck to piece it down. There would be no damage that way. It's a lot safer method. And then, uh, Dave also contacted, uh, John Lamping about dropping the other piece into his field and then just getting it cleaned up.
I talked to John, he said, do whatever we gotta do.
Yeah, and we were given permission just to do it the fast way on that half, but the other half is a, in my line of work, I'd call it a major hat. It's not, oh yeah, I was standing there for twenty years, it's a matter of short-term need to be taken care of.
Okay.
Um, Colin did get back with me, shot me a price too, but he didn't do it. I wrote them down and gave it to Dave.
Thousand dollars to take it down and altogether, just to take it down, fifteen, fifteen hundred to clean it all up, take it down.
It was a thousand dollars, just take it down and leave the mess, and then whoever wants it can deal with it. And it's fifteen hundred dollars for him to take it down and take the mess with him.
Okay. And the property owner doesn't want the wood?
No, he don't want none of the wood. Just, I went down and talked to him, he said, do whatever you wanna do, get rid of it. It's on town property, it's on, right away.
Okay.
It's a big sucker too, and it could come down any day, couldn't it?
Yeah, i- if it come down in the middle of the night or during one of these snow squalls, somebody's not wrecking it. I mean, it's.
If you wanna see it, you can just strike past Johnny Lamping on the left.
Okay.
Right by the cedar tree. And that's the other thing. If I were to do it, I'm definitely going to damage one cedar tree, so it would be compromised and may need to come down too with, um, Colin doing it, that, uh, cedar tree survived.
How many people around here have bucket trucks that could do that?
He's about the only one I know.
Don't look at me on that.
He's the one that took all the trees out back here. So.
Ryan, uh, Creative Landscape, we've got one up on forty-six, Todd Gigg, reach.
Mm-hmm.
There are two bucket trucks that I'm aware of around this area here.
Okay.
Has been trying to buy one last weekend.
You know, I'm kind of agreeing with, well, I looked at it a couple times with David, and I'm all in trouble with lines. A good windstorm or something like that, it could come down in the middle of the night, so I'd drive.
Then we need to get it down soon.
I don't quite timeframe Colin's daughter. I, I'd say he would be proactive owner. I mean, I talked, we looked at it like Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah.
And he looked at it the Friday after Thanksgiving.
That's.
Or, no, he looked at it Sunday.
He does a good job cleaning it up though.
Well, it was a twenty-five grand, John, that we have to do a good process on, so we just gotta decide on that.
Right.
That is cool, right?
I think we go ahead and have him take it down.
Yeah.
Um, you don't have to do the whole thing.
Right, take it, take it away.
Clean it up.
I will, if you guys do your approval, I'll sext you right away and put it on. But you guys tell me.
Yeah, I mean, if it, if it's, if it's the, the hazard that, that it's being described as and we have, we know weather coming in kind of right away. Like, I'd like to talk to Todd, but I also don't wanna screw around and all of a sudden this becomes an actual problem.
And from what I've seen in my past comments, it's very convenient for us.
When it comes down, it's gonna come right across the road.
It's gonna come across the road, and then we're not having fire, not to be out there.
Well, let's go ahead and get it taken care of.
Yeah. I'd, I'd make, I'd make a motion to, to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you're gonna call, call it?
I will text them right now.
So I'd be approximately two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, fifteen hundred dollars. Anything else? Make a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion.
Second.